I'd like to call the Wednesday, September 30th, special meeting to order at 7:04 PM. Mary, roll call vote, please.
Jim Papa-Boltzer.
Here.
Vice Chair Candelaora. Secretary Sienna.
Here.
Diana Bosamo.
Here.
Vincent May.
There.
Marcy and Astraea.
Here.
Cynthia Rice.
Can we salute the flag?
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Visitors? But the visitors' comments are limited to the items on the agenda. No student representative at this time?
Then I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the August 2020 Board of Education meeting as submitted.
Second discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Personnel? Scott, do you want to do personnel?
Yes, I can. We have a resignation of Ms. Danielle Banks, a Spanish teacher at North Branford Intermediate School. Ms. Banks has received an offer to teach at the collegiate level and will be doing distance learning at the college level. We have hired a teacher from another district, from Danbury, who was held to 30 days. Ms. Banks is with us for 30 days, and then we'll be transitioning to our new teacher, I believe, on October...
First day was on...
First, already there, first name. That was a fast 30 days.
It was.
Wow, okay. So she's here, our new teacher. So that's the update. We have appointments. I'm going to pass...
Wait, we need to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the resignation of Danielle Banks, Spanish teacher at North Branford Intermediate School, effective September 18th, 2020.
Our second discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Under appointments, I'm going to, to my right, pass a list of our new hires under the authority to hire for superintendent. This has been like an extended summer months as we've had been meeting virtually through Zoom and obviously with some of the transitions with COVID. I'm very fortunate that you did give me the authority to hire. You're going to see the list, and it's going to be coming around the corner. And I'm not going to read all of these. Some of these were, you were aware of last year. We had hired them before the summer break, our school psychologist, the new board certified behavior analyst, BCBA. And we had some changes with our grade five social worker, which is a one-year. So those are our new hires, the colleges that they attended or where they will be teaching. Their step placement. And to the far right is their salary based on the bargaining unit. And the bottom is any transfers or changes. We had four requests for transfers within the district that we honored. Okay? Any leave requests at this time? No leave requests. We'll move on to my report. There is no recognition or donations under Communications Exhibit B. I'm obviously not going to read through those. The administrators are here. This has been an opening like none other. I think it's safe to say, when I look at my administrative team, the amount of time, energy, and effort and things that don't run in the normal routine of running our school system. And they've done an amazing job. And with that being said, they're still continuing to focus on a number of things for the social, emotional well-being of our students, welcoming them back full-time in our third week of school. So I just want to thank them publicly for all of that. Any questions of the administrators at this time on any of the communications?
I don't have questions, but I would like to just reiterate what you said. From the parents, students, everything I'm hearing is so positive. And the administrators worked so hard over the summer to get all this together and get this ready for the opening. And we are very lucky to have the kids back in school full-time. There are a lot of districts that do not have them back full-time. And it's gone so smoothly. And it's a lot of thanks to everyone sitting out here.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, moving along. There are no field trips at this time because we can't go anywhere. So that pretty much puts a kibosh on that. That being said, an update on our COVID-19. As you are aware, I have been briefing you on the opening three weeks when we've had any positive tests. I'll give you enough information without breaching any HIPAA violations. I'm encouraging all of us. My administrative team knows as well that we protect the privacy and the rights of all students and staff, and we never do anything that would violate the HIPAA statute. So I appreciate your support with that. I think our team has done an amazing job with the information that we have received in our process in which we identify, trace, work with East Shore Health, communicate with families, secure, clean, and keep our buildings open. As you are aware, we have four students at the high school that are out right now with 39 students quarantining because of the proximity and the classes and the team that they're on. And they'll be due to come back next week. First phase incoming comes back next week. And we stay in contact with every student throughout, and they're doing very well. And the quarantined students are excited to get back as well. As you are aware, we have a staff member at the intermediate school, which you were notified of, and have five students, a number of staff, who we took precautionary measures with their proximity to the teacher as well. We've done an amazing job of filling in with these absences. The biggest challenge right now for any superintendent in the state of Connecticut is finding substitutes when you have a situation where you have staff members out of the building. It's difficult when we're not in a pandemic. It's really depleted now with the pandemic. So all hands have been on deck. We've had shared personnel going from building to building. We've had other certified people, coaches, stepping up, getting into classrooms. We've had administrators crossing buildings, reaching out, helping each other. So it's been a total team effort. We've been able to keep our doors open safely. We'll continue to do that. And I work in conjunction with our medical advisor, my COVID team, Andy Shortell. So I'll entertain any questions, keeping HIPAA and privacy in mind.
You know how real about that, yes. I do want to say that I am very impressed. And I know that I'm sometimes difficult and I question quite a bit, but you have all acted swiftly with purpose. Every time there was a positive teacher or student, you've worked to keep the schools open, which I think is incredible, especially when it is very easy to push to either a hybrid or a distance learning model. So your commitment to the social welfare of your entire community of children from K through 12 is outstanding and much appreciated. I also do appreciate that you try to keep the children and the teachers' identities as confidential as possible, especially with media coverage. And I understand, you know, we only have so much control, but I think everybody's medical records should be confidential at all times because none of us would like that. And we have enough of a strain on these children and teachers without this added extra burden.
We never received a call during the flu season when the student was absent. And now it seems like print media wants to continually post and publicize when there's a positive case for someone out of the building. And that's unfortunate, but we're doing everything we can to keep it within our family.
Just to have you address, there were parents that we didn't have the five-day machines, but now you have them. Could you just address that, so all of your parents?
So we changed the order midstream. We were waiting on products that were... I'm speaking to the audience here. Where's my camera?
Oh, where the cameras?
We were waiting on products that were being produced in China, and they were backlogged for several months. We switched the order to made in America, and we're able to expedite the order to within two weeks. So there are two fogging machines in every building. So there are four gallon backpack units that use the same Clorox tablets as our handheld ionizers. So the good news is that they're working off the same product. They're much faster, they're very safe, and the custodial crew is raving about them because they're able to get through a wing in a building in minutes with two of them working together. So that's been a great investment for us. So they're up in money, and they're being used nightly. So thank you for your support. And, you know, we've had to purchase and do a lot of things. Our sanitizers are working well. There's one in every building. They're there during the day, and that's been beneficial to us. Our night desodians are coming in during the day. We shifted their hours again. They're now 12 to 8 versus 11 to 7. So we're doing more cleaning at night now, getting that extra hour with, you know, four guys in the building and then two or three staying over at night. So things are good right there. So that's a kudos to my custodial team, who has been working diligently, and I appreciate it. Finance report, Ms. Wong.
You should have a report in front of you. I changed the format for you a little bit this month, the written part, so hopefully it's easier to read. I met with the town finance office on September 17th. This was the first of our regular meeting schedule that we're going to implement. We're going to meet on a regular basis to improve communication and to keep things clear between us. We're also going to work on processes that, you know, will make things easier for both sides. And we're going to do, as we have since I arrived, ongoing monthly reconciliations between us. So we're working on that. To update you with the new financial software, the town is still in discussion with Tyler Technologies regarding price for both the board and the town. The town is also looking at software options for them underneath the Tyler umbrella. And hopefully, we can wrap up those discussions and begin the implementation process, or at least schedule it. So we're waiting on that. In regards to the 1920 budget, as you know, that is complete. The auditors will be out for both the town and the board next week during the month of October for their field work and testing. I anticipate they'll be here in district the second week of October and then, I believe, the week of the 19th. You should have a 2021 budget report in front of you. We are in the process of adding payroll encumbrances for all of the salaries. That will help to start to project out for June 30th. Unfortunately, we've been having some issues with the software, and I was unable to get the payroll encumbrances in this report for you, but they are working on it. We also have another issue with the software and getting the paid time off to post onto the employees' checks for the new fiscal year. And that has been an ongoing issue for about a week and a half, and they're trying to resolve that as well. So needless to say, I'm looking forward to the new software. And then we will get this resolved as soon as we can because I know it is important to people.
Are people getting paid incorrectly?
Oh, no, this has nothing to do with the payment. So as an employee, at the bottom of your check stub, you'll have your approved sick time and vacation if you receive it, and personal time available to you. It will also show the amount of time that you've used to date and the ending. So it's that accrual with the paid time off that we're having an issue with.
As long as everybody's getting paid?
Yes, yes.
So there, and I don't want to interrupt you, but with everyone getting paid, I know that there was questions regarding new processes and time sheets, which for the first time in my 11 years and I think the history of Branford, any non-certified persons required by law to complete a time sheet every two weeks in order to process through the two-week pay piece. We did have a couple of hiccups with new hires with some paperwork that was pending and then some hourly people who did not turn time sheets in. Everyone has currently been paid to date, and we have worked outside of the traditional payroll method to make sure, when there was a mistake, to get those people paid. And I want to compliment Martha and Tracy for working with all staff members and making sure that it was rectified.
Great, thank you.
Also, I did highlight some areas that are listed on your narrative. There are some objects where there are some negative balances. So the first one is health insurance, object 210. That negative balance will be reduced as employees and/or retirees contribute to their health insurance as required. Workman's compensation, that renewal came in actually higher than we anticipated, as well as our property and liability insurances. There are eight separate policies we have under the property and liability heading. And all of those renewals unfortunately came in just a little bit higher than what we had anticipated. The natural gas, 621, that looks a little high to me, so we're going to take a look at that. It may just be a clerical error. And then object number 721, that is the building improvement for the auditorium. As you know, we went out to bid at the end of August for a replacement section of a burner for the auditorium. And so that expenditure or actually encumbrance is that awarded bid amount.
We're paying for that?
Yes.
Don't we sometimes get that from the town because they take in rental money on the auditorium?
I'm not sure about that piece of it, but I was instructed that...
That was last year's money?
This will have to come out of our funds.
And that was last year's money?
No, it's this year.
Oh, issue.
Because the work is taking place now.
It was that whole issue that we had with the lack of communication between the town.
Oh, that was the issue?
Yeah.
Because normally...
That's what spearheaded it.
Okay, because normally when there's an expense for the auditorium, I mean, if there's money in that account, it should come out of... I feel it should come out of that account. They're taking in the rental money.
It was discussed at nauseam early on.
Yeah, so in a comment on that, there currently is no rental income. We had zero come in for the summer months. We did do the carpet last year with that rental money, so there's nothing there.
Yeah.
I'm okay with this, and it had to be done. So we're... But in the future, once we open up and we're renting again, we'll use that.
And we did, we really did discuss it. We're trying to smooth some of our processes that led to some of the delay.
Right.
Okay. We are in the process of setting up grants through ALIO. We have started the process. It is not complete yet, so I do not have a printout to show you. But we are working to have that up and running as quickly as possible. And just to remind you that this will remove the need to run anything through QuickBooks. And all the transactions will follow the same process for our regular fund transactions. And as a side note, tomorrow, October 1st, the Connecticut Partnership Plan is transitioning to Anthem as the provider for the medical insurance. The benefit plan, the plan itself will not change, only the insurance company is. So I just wanted to let you know that fact as well.
Any questions for Ms. Wong? No?
No.
Ms. Wong, are you ready to move on?
I am good.
Okay, I already gave you the staffing update, so I'm going to move past. Any questions on any of the budget before we do it?
No, it's okay. I'll look at it more thoroughly later, and then I'll...
Okay. And please keep in mind, if any articles that you get during... If you have any questions, just call us or email us, and we will provide clarification or email right back to you. Staffing updates have been sent around, so you do have those. We're going to go through AP scores and teacher evaluation. Ms. Wu is going to speak to that. I know you're going to be very impressed with our AP scores in a non-traditional way. Last year, that we were doing virtual AP. I do want to speak to the virtual teaching right now. We have total 88 teachers right now providing distance learning, virtual learning to students in North Branford. So we have 1,700 students approximately. 88 teachers are participating. And many of them are participating because of quarantine students. As you know, at the high school, I mentioned before, 40 students went out because of the positive tests. So we've been very aggressive in protecting our students, isolating them, but then providing home instruction. And I want to compliment the teachers. I did a kudos to the administrators, and I would be remiss. And the word hybrid was mentioned before. And I'll go on record and state that I was never in favor of going to the hybrid, and I made that perfectly clear, that I wanted to open full-time, and I still believe that we've done the right thing. And that I was not surprised. It wasn't a matter of if, it was when, when something would happen. The teachers have been incredible with dealing with coming back after an extended timeout with their anxiety and then having to balance live teaching with distance learning teaching. And they've done an incredible job. And we appreciate it. And we, as we say, we're going day-to-day right now. We're not looking too far ahead because we'd be foolish to. And they understand that. And we've worked through a number of things, and we've had real communication with them, and we continue to grow this process. So that being said, you're going to hear about some of the outstanding results for our highest-end classes that we offered with advanced placement for college credit classes and the number of students that participate in a small high school of 524 students. The number of offerings is incredible, and the number of students that participated, as you'll see in this chart. The second piece will be the teacher evaluation piece and working with the state of Connecticut and really modifying in a year that is unlike no other the most equitable way to work with administrative team and teachers to adapt an evaluation model that's not overwhelming for our administrators and overwhelming for our teachers as well. So I really segwayed you quite well, Ms. Wu, and I'm going to turn it over to you.
Wonderful. You have in your packet slides that you're separate provided based on the last 80 years of data from the college board on AP scores. As you can see by the 2020, that's the most ranked column, 2020 number of AP students exams. Our numbers are extremely flattering. It really does show the work that our teachers and students have done. The tests were virtual last year, but going into the year, students did not know that. So while they did prepare, say, look for any other year, they tested very differently than they would have been any other year. And we are very proud of the success and the outcomes our students have. If you look over the eight-year span, there was only one other year, 2016, where the number of AP students was higher. And in that year, the population was already very high. So relatively speaking, we were actually a little better than now than then based on a 23% to 24% of students participating in AP courses as well as the number of exams. If you look at our percentage of students that scored three or better versus the state's, you can see that we consistently been above state average. The two spots in the bottom right-hand side show that the state did not provide the same type of data or metrics that they have in the past. They only did test course, so we could not do those comparisons. I do surmise that that is partly because some students were not able to test because of the virtual platform in which tests were done. So they were not as relied on, those statistics were not as heavily relied upon as they have in the past. So as Scott mentioned, we have approximately 11 courses with more running on offer. So in this list that you have on the second page, for instance, physics is not on here. But we do offer physics in alternate years. So there are more than the courses that are listed here that students do over their four years of high school have the opportunity to engage in. For a school district of our size, again, relatively speaking, I would say we are among the highest protected wise number of courses that are offered.
AP chemistry?
We have all the AP chemistry in the past. Again, it's enrollment-based, alternate-year kind of situation.
So that's the second science that is not here. Tracy mentioned physics, but AC Chem, we run on offer years based on enrollment. So you're looking at eight total, plus physics and chems, 10. And with the three for 2021, you're at 13 AP classes for a school of 524 students. That's off the charts. And you're also running ECS English to UConn?
ECE as well as other AP courses through platforms such as Benjaminoe. We have taken, students have been able to take French and Latin AP courses and things of that nature that we don't offer in the district, but we support students taking through a digital environment. Impressive data. So again, if you look at the noteworthy data, it talks about where our students are. This is Mr. Scott's summary of that chart that's on the first page. And we continue to look at information. And we see that 25% of total senior class successfully completed that AP course and scored a three or greater on the AP, on and at the exam. AP students scoring a three or above is involved by high the past eight years. And on the last page, it speaks of AP scholars with honors and with distinction. And these are students that have done more than one exam and scored three or more than one exam they explained to, or ready to answer.
Any questions on the AP?
As we move on, as Scott mentioned, that this is a year different than any other, and the state recognizes that and is trying to support administrators and educators in implementing what they should be implementing and doing school the way it needs to be done in these circumstances. That being said, a knowledge of the pandemic has caused learning stress on what would normally be the start of school year as well as the remainder of the year. So with the disruption to multiple systems in our schools, the state of Connecticut is offering flexibilities for the teacher evaluation program. When I'm done with this, each of you has a friendly description of things that I'm about to talk about. We will ask you to approve use of these flexibilities. Once I have your approval, I will then go and draft a plan. We will talk with our PDAC committee and unions and make sure that everyone has an understanding of the plan. We'll come back in October and ask you to script a plan. So one of the things the state has, in my opinion, one of the most dramatic, well, drastic or dramatic changes from the state's normal expectations is that the state has asked us to allow us to consider social, emotional learning when we talk about student market goals. So what we are allowed to do is to incorporate an indicator that includes social, emotional learning in with our academic goals or to actually include to several, one that's academic and one is social, emotional. One that's incorporating could be for a grade seven student, we can talk about making sure that student is able to meet the expectations in I-Ready because, again, we need growth. And say, within the indicators, not only are we talking about growth in I-Ready, but we're also talking about growth in perseverance, things that we can measure. And that perseverance is considered social, emotional learning. Habits of mind, if you ever heard about our concept, are considered social, emotional learning. And the state is giving us the flexibility to include these things because, again, the expectation this year is to attend to students' well-being and staff's well-being. So they are recognizing that and allowing us to show that in our teacher evaluation plan. One of the other things is to talk about being able to shift the types of observations we do. So instead of a formal, you're allowed to do multiple informals. Not only is this best practice in terms of allowing to see snapshots over a year to provide support to teachers and see their progressions, but also it allows for... and see their progressions, but also it allows for us to do evaluations and observations in any platform. If teachers are home and doing virtual learning, it's much different than if they're a person. We do not know what any month or any time period holds at this point, so it's important for us to be able to use these flexibilities. The state has also asked for our stateholder feedback to incorporate ongoing communication as a goal and then to talk about things like evaluation-based professional learning, which we already do, and to then say that remediation improvement plans are still included. If there is a teacher that's in need of support, we will recognize it and address it with the teacher and request for meetings. I think overall, it really is the state's response to the situation that school districts are in. So being able to use these flexibilities will support our teachers and our administrators at this time.
So we're adapting and adopting through an unusual time. So that there's the support of the teachers, the accountability piece, the assistance with the administrators with us to be flexible. There's a motion that would have to be made.
AP.
I have a question for this.
Yeah?
Sure.
I know deal with other teachers' contracts. There's certain criteria that has to be met when there's observations and everything else. Have these six paragraphs are any of them in conflict with the teacher's?
They are not.
There's been research of...
The only thing that would change based on the teacher evaluation plan, which is in concert with the teacher's union contract, would be that moving from formal to informal, which we've discussed, and it is a may use it formal instead of plural. So we could, and any example that I give in the document, I actually say for non-tenured teachers, I think a formal is still important. So you still have that whole process to which a new or beginning teacher go through so they can see how that process works. And as administrators, we can see really every piece of their teachings and determine where they need support. So nothing is in conflict and is a little different. But the state flexibilities are really, they take into consideration what is the normal expectation and the ability districts to decide, but we will discuss those.
I don't have a problem with motion here, but I would just recommend making motion to accept each one individually. If you find something that seems to happen, you almost, almost as a whole, but that's up to you. I would not proceed with that.
I have, I'm mostly conscious of this. They all come from the state and we can do them separately. And this is all, almost all of them are perfect to the may. So we may begin some of them and not others. It depends on, again, on the collaboration between all the parties.
And that's why my recommendation, you go individually. If you find something's wrong with one of them, the rest of it is not void, otherwise the motion blocked. One of them is wrong and the motion's defeated. And that's my recommendation, that's all. I don't disagree with you.
No, I...
Well, I'm sure that's not a problem. Based on the Ms. Wu's explanation, I would agree with paragraph number one of the CFA twenty-twenty-one evaluation flexibility question.
Here is the motion. So adapt it with your paragraph length so that we have all the correct guidelines.
Okay. On the first one, to approve paragraph number one, to approve the use of the flexibility for implementing the Connecticut guidelines for education evaluation for twenty-twenty-one school year, allow by Connecticut State Board of Education.
Discussion?
Your second?
Yes.
I can hear you.
Mary, do we have a little call though?
Sure.
Chairman Paco Holdress? Secretary UCM? Jan O'Sama? Yes. And to base?
Yes.
Mars Mina?
Yes.
Move to approve number two of the use of the flexibility for implementing the Connecticut government for educator evaluation for twenty-twenty-one school year, allow by Connecticut State Board of Education.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve number three, stateholder feedback for approving the use of the flexibility for implementing the Connecticut guidelines for educator evaluation for twenty-twenty-one school year, allow by Connecticut State Board of Education.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve number four, evaluation-based professional learning, the use of the flexibility for implementing the Connecticut guidelines for educator evaluation for twenty-twenty-one school year, allow by Connecticut State Board of Education.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Approve number five, submit ratings for level matrix rating system, the use of the flexibility for implementing the Connecticut guideline for educator evaluation for the twenty-twenty-one school year, allow by Connecticut State Board of Education.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye. To approve number six, improvement and remediation plans, the use of the flexibility for implementing the Connecticut guideline for educator evaluation for the twenty-twenty-one school year, allow by Connecticut State Board of Education.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Chairman, your question?
Yep, my pleasure. Town managers request?
No, I just, I received a phone call two weeks ago from the town manager regarding the potential for a site power on town property. And I requested further information, which was provided today with a site map. And I had a second conversation that I would tour with the town manager sometime in the next two weeks, where the site was, and do a walkthrough with him for, just for my information before I would do anything with reporting to the board. I just don't have any information at this point. And I do not want to over-involve the board at this time in something that I don't have enough information on. So he assured me that nothing was going to be even discussed until all of the leaves are off the trees and help members or they will get the site again. So I'm comfortable with walking this site and then reporting back to getting more information.
Is this something that the communications committee should be initiated for?
I think we should, we should look to a meeting with members of the council from that committee. This, I just got bored of this. So I'm fact-finding right now and I don't want to say anything or misinform anyone until I go and actually walk up there and see the impact on our site, on our school site, what it would look like, what it would be, what the impact would be, get the science behind why this location, what this would mean, everything that would be.
Well, what's more important to me is not the aesthetics, but the risk.
The technology of the site with... What would it actually be doing and what radio waves and things would be coming off of that? So there's a lot of information that we need to gather. And we'll keep you posted as I said, I just got a call on this.
I would really like a communications meeting for that. Yeah, so when it starts rolling, make sure that...
And I made it clear in our conversation that, you know, we're just getting this. We need a lot of information before...
And frankly, I don't know what our goal will be. We don't own that land.
Right, right. It is town, it's just our, our schools and our location here. We want to do diligence and we want to make sure for impact on the community and our school.
All right, so we'll move this because it's not really an item.
It's not.
So we need to move past this, put it on the agenda for next time.
Can I just, I've given the paper about it.
Which I have just received today.
Yeah, I was just handing it before the meeting and the access is off the ground here. But it does say co-owner is Northern Intermillion School, which is...
I don't believe, I don't believe, I don't believe property does that. I don't know for sure. We have to look into that.
Yeah.
We should put our questions down because it has to be on the agenda for next, don't you think? And we'll load up our questions and go and then we'll do a communication.
And I will involve everyone. And again, I think we're way too early in anything because as far as I'm concerned, until we sit down and have conversations and find out the details of what this would involve, I don't want to race into its time.
I'm sorry, do we have a communications meeting?
We do.
All right.
O'Sama?
Me.
Oh, okay. And Caroline's on it too.
The two Vs and Caroline.
So that would be Sean, Mars, and Caroline. Yeah. You know, I wonder if the town manager would also like just a once-a-month communication meeting regarding COVID just so that it can be updated. I mean, I know you have a meeting.
We do.
But the town council, I'm not sure, gets all of that information. So I mean, it might be a good idea. You could just reach out to them and say, hey, does the town council want a communication meeting regarding, you know, updates or?
Right.
Yeah, just to keep the lines open.
Sure. Okay, that being said, the renovation project, I'm going to, I'm going to share first what I have done in this process and then I know that Ms. Anna is going to piggyback off of that as a member of the ad hoc committee. So I'm going to pass a timeline around to you, which really updates and fast-tracks September tenth committee meeting up until our current visit just yesterday at Morgan High School. And I'm kind of walking through this timeline. So you obviously are aware of the genesis of this ad hoc committee why it was formed and what it was looking to do. I think we've, I think we've narrowed down through our many conversations with QAM and now presentations to the ad hoc committee, six different options, the most recent being the relocation of a new building closer to the auditorium that would take longer to complete but could be phased in without significant disruptions. And that's the part that I'm really excited about. It does not include the rental of portable units because we phased demolished the building and we remove students in a safe manner according to completion of teaching areas. That being said, there have been two-site visits to Morgan High School that members of the ad hoc committee with our architect, QAM, and the financial advisor have toured the building. We selected Morgan High School because of its school population, its shoreline location, and its demographics. It's very similar to North Branford. We were very impressed with the teaching space, the twenty-first century learning models that were in place, and it really worked well with the schematic that had been presented by Rusty Malik towards our potential new site. So I think, I don't want to put the horse in front of the cart, but we, I think we've made great progress. I think we have a consensus on a plan that I think the community will be very interested in. They will be very excited about. Beth, if I'm saying too much and you want to join me?
Well, we have another meeting tomorrow. And at the last meeting, Rusty presented us with the location. And this is bigger than that. Using one of the qualities, taking out an established shape and building a building there, then demolishing rooms and ways. And there was a, he sent to us, I just want to look. Blue is where the first phase would go in and check the construction, kind of the same, sorry. Construction area. And then, then maybe take down a second half of the bar and then they would build the gymnasium area. And I asked how long, yeah, sorry.
No, it's in this packet you gave us. There's really good ones in this packet.
Oh, what?
I just handed you.
Just give it to us.
That's okay.
Thanks, I was like, I really read the...
I really like it. So the first, so on this page where it shows the blue, that would be the first phase, just construction area. And then it shows where they could change and they take down the rest and put the gymnasium in. And I asked, Rusty said about forty months?
Forty months.
And I asked how long would the first blue phase of the building be when taking down the first out? He thought they would be twelve months. So that, I mean, the kids would be dislocated, but then twelve, and they'd be using the old gym. But in twelve months, they would be in the new set of classrooms. And then they would go to the gym, but they would be using the old gym. And the, so that they should have...
So it's still attached to the auditorium?
No.
No, no. If you look at toward the end of the packet, there's some pictures of what they look like.
Okay, thanks.
And there's going to be like an outdoor area, but it is not connected. You have to go outside and go into the front.
It's like a courtyard they're doing.
Yeah.
Very close.
Oh, oh, that's lovely.
Yeah, it's very, very close. It's in the picture.
You could do a cartwheel from one building to the other.
Yeah. And I think they're going to have, if I read it or look at the cafes like in between, right in between the buildings, like an outdoor cafe.
Oh, nice. Here's a nice picture.
So they would have to walk outside into the auditorium.
But for like seconds.
Oh, yeah, I see it now. I got to...
Yes.
It looks lovely.
It really looks nice.
It looks nicer than the other one and it's in close proximity to the auditorium.
I like it because it's cohesive. It's the high school one, it's like a trailhead. It's cohesive and...
Are we keeping the old gymnasium?
No.
No, the building, that would be phase two where they build the gymnasium.
So it's about...
So the gymnasium would be, yeah, is it ready?
I'm sorry.
So the gymnasium would be, so the first phase, second phase, and then this week, final. But then we're using the gym until this...
So that new sport would be displaced for another year?
No, zero.
That was high sarcasm, sorry.
So reviewing this design and as Ms. Anna mentioned, it's a forty-month project, but the other one was a twenty-four, the thirty-month project. Because of the demolition, we extend the time and we work around the demolition. With that comes cost. So the original project, the town council produced sixty-two million. If they do adopt this plan in this phase, it would be sixty-four and change. So the council would have to re-approve and re-vote on the new building for, we'll say, sixty-five million dollars, which would then encapsule all of our needs. It would satisfy our educational needs or proximity to the auditorium. It would still allow us to have, safety is our highest priority with preserving our fields and safety zones while we're constructing this so kids are not sitting in board booths or moved to another location. I want to commend QAM, and this is nothing more than an appreciation for, in a two-week period, being able to put something like this together and then do two separate presentations to the ad hoc committees to make sure that members, all that knowledge we visually, listen to and ask questions, what tour. And I appreciate their flexibility in making sure that they got out to see all of this and then toured with us.
And that house that has certainly done their due diligence. I mean, this is fabulous.
I've done a borising of a new area. Maybe tomorrow we'll get yourselves together.
So we're in the process of what we'll do is, as you know, we did borings.
Yeah, yeah.
We're going to go back to now this new site and we're going to use the town. But our person that did the borings is going to come out and just, he does the inspection and the soil sampling. So he'll work with our town and we should have those results a week after they're done. So that's going to happen on this week.
Well, thank you for all your hard work and to the ad hoc committee's work. I mean, it really, hopefully this will...
It's exciting.
Where we need to be, right? And you feel tangible there, which is nice.
Yeah.
And the pictures make it real. So October fifteenth, it's a date on here, Scott. Is that, is that a hard, fast date? Just because I think that board members should attend as well.
Yeah, so what's happening now is, as Ms. Anna said, they're meeting tomorrow night. They're going to present options and then come with a plan to recommend to the council. At that point, we'll ask board members and Rusty to come at the second meeting to answer questions, meeting, um, to answer questions, to, to hear more about it, to, uh, hear directly from the ad hoc committee. Um, and then we'll move this through the state process as well. So the council will have to, excuse me, change their, um, initial $62 million to $65 million. There'll be the explanation and we'll go through that presentation with the board present and then we'll fast track this to get this, uh, invite number first.
Okay. I just wanna make sure that I'm there on October 15th. That's the reason I was pressing for the date.
Yeah, so you, uh, you will be well informed, uh, when we finalize all these dates. Um, I'm assuming tomorrow night's gonna go quite well with the ad hoc committee and then they're gonna notify us on Friday and then once they do that, that plan will start to go into place with the council. Okay?
Yeah.
And I wanna thank Miss Anna. I, I appreciate it. And Bill Chilly as well, another member that, uh, he's not here this night, uh, tonight, but they've, uh, been very, uh, I think with Miss Anna's background as an educator, it brings a lot from the people that, um, work in schools and understand and build with his background in facilities that...
It's insane.
Yeah, everybody...
Yeah, everyone.
Yeah. And, uh, Mr. Rose was there as well with Randy. So they're looking at more of the functional operational piece of boiler rooms and electrical rooms and why is there, you know, this stones around here and what's the, and we really had a healthy conversation and I think everyone walked away with a, a real good feeling that this is the direction we need to build new. Uh, and then 70 years from now, we're really looking at it and saying that it's the right thing.
Is it still standing?
It, it will be standing.
Good.
Okay.
I think 70 years from now, I'm gonna have no comment.
No comment. Uh, okay, committee reports. Uh, I'll just start negotiations that you know that we have finalized the nursing secretary and food service contracts. And I thank, um, Sean and Marcy and Cindy for, for being on those who are still with us. So, so we'll...
They have to ratify first?
Yeah.
They have to ratify.
We've...
Should that be on our, um, next agenda?
Yeah.
Will you just, um, Mary, ratify the, you can't write that?
No, it's on the makes me change.
No, I know. I just want you to make a note on it that I'm saying it. So, yeah, so that I don't forget. Cause I'll forget. Cause I might watch the tape, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I thank the board for their hard work and participation. And we are still, um, in the process of the so, uh, arguing that is, um, curriculum instruction and strategic planning.
So, speaking, we spoke about teacher evaluation plan as well as had a guest speaker. His name is Friday, a science teacher who governs the district as well as a Google certified trainer and, uh, one of our structural technologies coaches. Uh, it's really how she works. She spoke to the members of the committee about the professional development structure that would be used for two days during the five-day beginning of school professional development week for the district. And we were able to provide a digital platform that gave student, well, teacher choice and some customization of professional development that allowed teachers to choose if they felt they could use it in their classroom. Ladies, would you like to comment?
So, um, excellent presentation, very informative, um, very interesting. Cause I am not like a tech person, so all these things are new to me. Um, but you're doing an amazing job.
It was a very nice presentation and, um, it seems that a lot of the teachers that might be not tech savvy, it's a way to get them tech savvy and to help with the kids.
What I think that we talked about was that we are providing instruction to teachers as we would expect them to have if we start students providing that choice using a 21st century model as well as, as that targeted individual attention and customization. So I appreciate the work of, of the coaches in, in constructing that format and providing support for it.
Um, Aces, it would be from the September 4 meeting, but I was unable to attend.
Can I just say something?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, there was no meeting, but, um, one of the things that I was asked to look into was at the meetings, well, it's been like eight months. So getting that into routine with the kids saying, but I was asked something to that.
Right.
And Scott looked into it and he addressed it with all the, um, principles and so for most, they're saying, but I guess sometimes it's a little rushed in the morning. They forget, but they're working on it. Um, the other key kinda I didn't do was like when you probably saw, now, but yet it's still, and I have to bring some forward only because they still have Donna and Nikki in it. And I, so I need to update them for that.
I'm sorry to hear you. It doesn't...
They have Donna and Nikki's.
Oh, okay.
So you have to update the whole of your back. Um, and I will, I think, uh...
His name and not his title?
Yes, yeah.
So anytime you have those, email me and then we'll go in.
Yeah, I still have to look through more.
Sure, no, we'll call them and I, I have to...
But, yeah, so I have, you know, like, um, like 820 to 10222, but I still have to keep going.
Sure.
But just so you have to take his name off and update it. Rusty is there and then done. And so we got that. And the charter did a little policy on it.
No, it shouldn't have a name. It should have a, a title or a position anyways. It's not a specific name.
Only if it's a, a position like a title coordinator, then we list their name and the policy that it's listed for who would be in charge of investigating the title on each door or something. So those have to be changed. Um, we'll update this.
It's just a reality.
Yeah, yeah. But it needs to be accurate.
It has to be accurate.
Because those people are assigned as our representatives by law and have, you know, title on other things there. So it's a good point. Think the building committee touched upon with everything with the school. Um, that's all there is.
Visitors impressed?
Can we talk? Alright. My name is, uh, Dr. Frank Briganna. I live, uh, up here in, uh, Northford. And I'm here to thank you guys to allow the construction of the cell tower. Unfortunately, you found out tonight or this has been going on for a few months. And I've heard through Googling, but per public records, this council owns part of that property. And so you have a fiduciary responsibility to search this out and understand what's going on.
Uh, just for, for accuracy, uh, the town of North Ramford owns all of the land and the buildings.
That's not what the town record shows.
What that's, I'm just saying for...
Well, I talked about the town record show.
Okay.
Town record show, which you have there, this school board owns that property, half of the property. And we are concerned about the health and safety of the students and residents. And so unlike you, that you just found out today, you will find when you go on your site walk, that that site has been stayed and marked out for over a month. Alright? In addition to that, when you do your due diligence, you will find out that there is actually no need for that tower because the town is adequately covered with cell service and we can prove that. You will also find out that the town did not notice this, has not sent out any public meetings on this, or has let anyone know that this is going on. That most of you are finding out tonight, even you found out today. Correct?
I received the maps today. I got a phone call, not, not to run it, but I will offer this to you, sir. I will, uh, you set up a time, you and I will walk up there together.
Well, I definitely, because I will tell you right now, this is a health and safety issue. You're putting a tower above school. You're putting a tower above residents. You have not notified any of the parents of this school or the faculty or the staff of the potential health risks that they're gonna face by having that, their kids and the staff behind me that tower, let alone the residents that live there. Right? We have prepared a communication document that we have asked, we asked the principal about this and that this will...
Any, any communications goes through...
We understand.
Through my office.
We understand.
We have a policy on, on what we...
This is Donna, visitors' comments. We're not supposed to be responding at all. He only gets two minutes, so.
And I, and I think, I think it's, let's do this. You and I, let's get together. You come to my office, you and I have a conversation, then we will walk to that.
Wait, excuse me, I already speak.
No, I'm not gonna talk.
And come to your office.
I'm, I'm offering.
But I, I was really, I am really annoyed that one, this town is not communicating to people that this is going on your property. And number two, it's annoying to me that there's so much misinformation about this project or no information. It's not been noticed and did not go out to did. The power is unneeded. It's a health and safety issue. And this board needs to take into account the safety of its children, its faculty, and staff. If you look at the access road, it comes in right behind, right behind Tubby Valley School. Goes up the side of the mountain. There'll be high, high tower. There'll be heavy equipment and other, uh, trucks going up there to build a hundred plus foot tower, right? It's gonna go by the rack area, et cetera. Then it should not be allowed. You have, you have a responsibility to the residents and the citizens of this town. There are walls.
Thank you, sir. Time's up.
Well, first of all, you don't want to get two minutes.
But, but sir...
That doesn't say it on your minutes. There's been some rule that...
It's a different policy.
Okay, well, I'm sorry.
Sir, I, I don't wanna, but I will be with you and I will spend as much time as you would like.
Well, it's not, it's not just with me. You're a bunch of people.
No, but you're the spokesperson for tonight who's here. And, and I will walk up to that site with you and give you as much time as you need.
We'd like to do it, definitely. I'll wait, I'll look changes for this.
The board was not aware of any of this, so that's, we'll...
And again, and again, I point out, that's a communication issue.
Yeah, no.
And this, and the, and the, parents need to know this is an issue. I bet you if you let their parents know that they're gonna put a cell tower over these kids' heads, that they will not be happy about it.
And I assure you, and I've been, uh, with this board for many years, some of them, first and foremost, their highest priority is the safety of every child in this district. First and foremost. So I know that they are gonna do what is right, what's within their responsibility as board members. And, and we'll start with you communicating with me.
And since it's gonna be on the agenda next week, I trust that a number of us can come here and talk at length about this, uh, project, correct? Is that the policy?
There's a two-minute timer for speak, for, for comments.
Per person.
So each person gets a minute?
Yeah. Can I, I didn't get your name. You said, so can we?
Dr. Briganna.
She knows Briganna. She knows me. Okay, so. She knows me.
Okay, and you can communicate with me to...
I'll, I'll give you my information after.
Okay, fair enough.
Go to the board.
Um, my son is going to, in just third kindergarten, so I just wanted to say how well it's going. Um, how much, I was really nervous about the mask wearing all day. He's good at wearing a mask, but it's a long time. But he has no complaints. He's really enjoying outdoor time. Um, his only complaint is recess, wouldn't call it recess, was a jip because he couldn't go on the play equipment. So this week they got, this week he got the play equipment. He was much happier. It was like totally psyched out.
She's right, it is a jip.
He told it was a total jip.
Who doesn't want to go on the play equipment? Come on.
He was, he's like, they have it, why can't we use it? But anyway, he's really enjoying it and the outdoor time. He loves it and I, I, I think it's almost as something that we should add in, even if it's not go with. The outdoor learning is, is fabulous. So, um, he's having a grade survey, so.
Thank you.
And then my older son is in high school, is also having a grade survey. He's in high school, so it's not...
That's, well, it's...
He doesn't get recessed. Yeah, he doesn't get recessed, you know, play equipment. So, so thank you.
Thank you. I don't have anything else.
Alright, good, alright.
I'm done. I've said enough.
The next regular board of education meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, October 21st, 2020.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.